I hope you went where you needed to go at least. Oh good. Cause apparently there's still an issue so maybe we'll get out early tonight. Maybe we can only hope. Okay again and it should be the same exact password correct? Thank you. So it will still be this.
Seven seven nine eight six three.
Three seven nine eight six three.
That's code is five three two.
Well first I do this right I have to going up. Yeah. It's code go ahead.
Five three two. Nine fifty.
Then anytime it has all this other stuff you can exit all that stuff right? Has nothing to do with. Or don't even worry about it.
Yeah just leave it.
Join with computer audio okay. Hey how's it going? Look at me. Okay so now big and then I want to judge it where. Oh check over there if you don't mind and see if if we can see. Can see my bald spot okay so more than likely they'll sit on this side right? And they'll be talking here. Is that a good view?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hello hello is there anybody out there?
That's horrible. There oh no.
Hello hello.
It's a one.
Thank you.
Hello, wondering if anybody can hear me?
Counselor Salazar Torres, I can hear you.
I can hear you too, señor and señorita. Bueno, muchas gracias, just wanted to make sure, thank you.
Todo esta bien, gracias.
Hello, this is Counselor Justin, wondering what's going on, it's almost six fifteen. Debbie, could you please let us know what's going on, why the meeting hasn't started or are we waiting for a quorum or what's going on now? We just got your message or that I got your message on chat and no, we have not, we cannot hear anything that the meeting was started at six oh seven. I can see what's going on in chambers and it does not look like everybody's in seats for a meeting, so the six oh seven part is very confusing.
I can hear it.
Hey, hi there.
I can hear you, Counselor Manny and Counselor Torres, but that's it.
Same with me, I can only hear Counselor Benavides, Counselor Manny, Counselor Justin.
Same here guys, can't hear nothing from the chambers.
Same here, guys. Can't hear nothing from the chambers.
Can you hear me now? I can hear you, Debbie. Okay, then we should be good.
Hello, counselors. Can you hear me?
Now we can.
Yes, now we can. We were just told via, you know, text on the Zoom that it started at 6:07. So that was very confusing.
Counselor, I am, it's Counselor Rodriguez. I'm the one that sent the message, and I did not say that the meeting started at 6:07. I said the mayor came forth and stated that they were looking for an agenda item, and that's why we were waiting.
Good, good evening, everyone. The time is 6:18. I'll call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Espanola City Council for Tuesday, October 10. This is the first meeting of the month for the month of October. Thank you for joining us this evening. Would you all please join and stand team for the Pledge of Allegiance?
One nation under God, indivisible, with which we are.
Your heavenly Father, enlighten us to do your will in this valley, Lord. Empower us through the Holy Spirit, who always do and be instruments of peace, and your, your ability to guide us, and always enlighten us. In your name, amen. I want to take this time to recognize former city employee Trini Velasquez. Her father, Paul Vivera, passed away this past week. Thank you.
I would also like to recognize Alfonso Haramio, who also passed this week. If we could be in silence for a few moments. Thank you.
Thank you.
As well as, if I may, Counselor Dennis Tim Salazar's nephew, please. Thank you.
Yes, yes. Forgive us, everyone. We send our deepest heartfelt condolences to Counselor Dennis Tim Salazar on the loss of his nephew on Saturday, his nephew James Johnson, Jr. Thank you. We send our thoughts and prayers out to Counselor Dennis Tim Salazar, who's experienced a lot of tragedy recently, come last week's. Evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us this evening. Ms. Garcia, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Protem Piggy Sue Martinez.
Honored to be with you all.
Counselors Nanette D. Rodriguez. Erin J. Salazar. Denise D. Benavides.
Present.
Dorothy D. Valdez.
Present.
Justin Salazar Torres.
Present.
Manuel J. Martinez.
Present.
Dennis Tim Salazar.
Present, and thank you all for the condolences.
We have a quorum.
You, Ms. Garcia, can you confirm legal councils on the air as well?
Yes.
Okay, great. Members of the governing body, you have the agenda before you. Mr. Lujan actually has a recommendation for an amendment to the agenda for this evening.
Thank you, Mayor, Counselors. Madam Mayor Protem, I'd like to remove. I'm looking for it here, Mayor.
C.
Item C, discussion approved Espinoza Fire Department Training Facility presented by Chief Johnny Martinez and Deputy Chief John Rickerstein. Mayor, we'd like to, to look further into this item before we be needed to the council for final approval.
Motion to approve with these set amendments.
Motion made by Counselor Justin Salazar Torres, second by Counselor Nanette Rodriguez. Do I have any other amendments to tonight's agenda?
Under discussion.
Under discussion. Mayor Protem Piggy Sue Martinez.
I'm wondering if the situation with D is the same as the situation with C, and if, if this is something that we should have a special meeting for.
Mr. Lujan?
Mayor, Madam Mayor Protem, both these items are also under the CES, and could possibly fall into the same category. So the budget was approved for the, for the, the, the trucks, for the, the trucks for sanitation. And then, and under that budget, that's where you see these monies being provided. But having under the discussions from item C, I would probably right now refer to the attorney on this for, for discussions before we, we table these two items as well.
Mr. Renick.
Thank you, Mayor. I understand Mr. Lujan was talking about items B and E, the solid waste purchases. Is that right?
And C, C as well, Mr. Renick.
Well, yeah, see, I got, item C is a, a proposal to purchase the facility either on a cooperative purchasing agreement with an out-of-state entity called Sourcewell. And D and E are proposals to purchase on price agreements with CES, Cooperative Educational Services. Though an item C is also being proposed as a sole source. I have not yet seen all of the information needed on those. I don't know if the purchasing department has it, but it's not been forwarded to us. So what Mr. Lujan said, we need more information. I concur with that.
Mayor. Mr. Lujan. If it's okay with John, let's, let's table these till the special meeting next week regarding these factors so that we are, give legal and the, the auditors more tend to look into this so that we are not faced with any more discrepancies in that regard. So I, I feel more comfortable, Mayor, if we've also.
I do have a statement.
Items.
Tridian.
Yes.
Counselor Justin Salazar Torres.
Thank you, Mayor. So Mayor and everybody that's in chambers, we had our public works meeting, and Mr. Francisco had brought this before us already. It's, now it'll be the third time if we send it again, fourth time. But, you know, Mayor Protem, everybody in the committee has extended that, you know, this may quote unquote be an emergency purchases. This department is in dire need of these things. You know, for us to say that we don't have as much information as we should, for it to come before the committee, you know, twice, and to come before the governing body, full council twice, is, is beyond me. But this department really needs help. And it was quote unquote said by, you know, Mayor Protem and everybody else, that this should be an emergency purchase, and these guys need the help. So I just want to state that. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Piggy Sue Martinez.
Thank you, Counselor Justin. You know, I, I agree with you wholeheartedly that, that these guys are in dire needs of, of new trucks. I so want to, to do this immediately, if not yesterday. The issue is, is that if the attorney is not sure about what has been done thus far, I would really rather be cautious and and allow the attorney what he needs to approve the purchase and make sure that we're following that purchase agreement to the letter of the law. Concerning item E, I don't have an issue with this being an emergency purchase because I feel like that's probably the one that the guys need the most at this point. Even though I realize that you do need the other ones, I think it's a special meeting a week away from, from today for both issues to clarify everything that needs to be clarified for it to qualify for a CES purchase. So I realize the enormity of what is happening, but if, if the attorney hasn't received what he believes is enough information to approve the purch, the purchase, then I think we need to be cautious. Do you want to yield to John to see if he has anything to add to this?
I'd rather have Mr. Lujan chime in regarding this and, and such. Thank you, Mayor, Madam Mayor Protem. And Chairman Torres Salazar Torres, in those discussions, I attended that meeting, and, and, and I know John Francisco's been working very hard on this item to get it forward. But again, maybe we just, you know, throwing caution to the wind, we move C and D and allow item D, or B and C, I'm sorry, or no, C and D be removed, and I have be remain on the, on the agenda for discussion to possibly move forward. If, if the Madam Mayor Protem and, and the Chair of the Public Works Committee are, are comfortable with that, Mayor.
So, yeah, I was just gonna say, Mr. Lujan, so you're indicating, you're recommending to leave D and E on here, but.
No, 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 Mayor. The other way. Removing C and D and allowing E to proceed.
Okay.
If I may chime in.
Hold a minute, Counselor. Counselor.
Thank you.
Counselor Manny Martinez.
Thank you. I, I also just want to say we've, this has been on the back and forth, as Counselor Salazar has said, and also Counselor or Mayor Protem, I just want to state, though, that I'm not sure what the, the city attorney hasn't looked at considering it's been passed back and forth for such a long time already. I'm not sure what's left for him to look at. Also, my understanding is these kind of purchases, the prices can go up continuously go up the longer that we wait, and not to mention how long out it'll take for us to get these, these trucks. So the longer we wait, we're going to end up hurting ourselves in the long run, especially since we did take on the, the, the trash removal. That's just my opinion.
Mr., I'm Counselor Justin Salazar Torres.
Thank you, Mayor. And I also want to state the urgency behind it was it was brought to our attention, our attention during the last committee meeting that, you know, we've had employees also get hurt. So, you know, the urgency behind this is, is very high, and, you know, I, I would really love to hear the testimony of Mr. Francisco to urge his governing body to leave these on this agenda. Thank you.
Mr. Renick.
Thank you, Mayor. This is going to take me a moment to sort all that out. The, I understand that Public Works and, and Public Safety Committees have met and have determined the need for these purchases and the sources of payment. But those committees do not deal with procurement itself. That's a separate matter. That is an internal matter of the administration to follow the procurement code and follow the, the various ways there are to purchase something. It's not dependent on need unless it's an emergency. Now, this is the first I've heard that item E here is an emergency. It's also the first time I've seen this item. The others that are included in D are the ones we saw before, not E. These, all of these D and E are price agreements. They are, they don't go through these two committees. They go through the purchasing department. CES has price agreements with each of these vendors for the particular item that is listed. In other words, CES sends out an invitation for bids, Bruckner Trucking or Peats, these are the vendors. They respond, they say, we'll give you this item, this truck for X dollars. CES then offers that to people like Espanola because they have an agreement. What we have not seen is the price agreement between those vendors and CES. We have no way of knowing if what is being quoted by the vendor is the same thing that is on CES's price list. I would not expect either John Francisco or John Wickersham to have that information. That's a purchasing matter. That should be in the purchasing office. Now, the agreement with CES is 10, over 10 years old. It may not be up to date. What they call a blue book is their list of vendors and products is something that the purchasing office would have, if anybody. You can't get it online except by being registered through the purchasing office. To complicate a little farther on these two D and E items, there's four different vendors there for different vehicles. Some of it is not assembled. You buy a truck chassis from one company, you buy the rest of the truck from another company. Somebody has to put it together. That's not shown here. That may or may not be in the price agreements between the vendors and CES. Haven't seen it. There's just simply nothing that's been provided. When it comes to the fire training tower, that possibly could be a sole source, but no justification has been given yet for that. The justification is from the vendor, WHP, saying, we're the only ones who can provide this product. That's the same thing as Fort Motor Company saying, we're the only ones who can provide you a Ford. Doesn't mean they're the only ones who can provide you a car, just their car. We haven't seen the sole source justification yet. The training tower, as quoted by the vendor, the agreement you have before you tonight, is for $500,000. The price agreement with Sourcewell, that's the purchasing entity, is $200,000. So it's two and a half times, almost three times the amount that Sourcewell, which is our equivalent of CES, three times the amount that they have on their price agreement. So until we see why the price agreement and the vendor's quote are different, you can't go forward with it. If it's an, if either of these are an emergency, then it could be handled as an emergency procurement. But that, as I say, this is the first I've heard of that.
Thank you, Mr. Renick. Counselor Manny Martinez.
Sorry, sir, I forgot to take my hand down. Sorry about that.
Okay. Okay, Counselor Justin Salazar Torres.
Thank you, sir. Again, I, I just respectfully ask that we can hear the testimony of Mr. Francisco regarding these items. And then, secondly, you know, this did come before this full governing body, and we had given directive to the city attorney to pursue different financing and so forth. The, the purchase of, the, I believe it's a compactor truck, and Mr. Francisco can correct me. But that one itself, because the city drug its legs on it, they sold it. So we were not able to pursue it. We don't know what the turnaround time will be on this item. I know that item itself is very urgent for this department. But I do ask that this governing body listen to the testimony of Mr. Francisco to know the dire need of these vehicles. Thank you.
Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Counselors. So the vehicles that we're, we're discussing, I think that everybody's kind of aware, and if they're not aware, there is a major strike in the auto industry going on right now, and this strike included big truck manufacturers as of day before yesterday. And so it's, all this does is it prolongs this endeavor further down the road. So the emergency vehicle that we're talking about was a vehicle that we actually had at the very beginning. But the contractor that was going to provide this vehicle just stopped communicating with us. And this was from Texas. It was, it was a used vehicle that we're going to acquire. So it turned out to be an emergency because we are currently handling the small roads that we're dealing with illegally because we do not have a containment factor. the uh small roads that uh we're dealing with illegally because we do not have a containment factor uh to contain this trash in the back of a pickup. So we need a compactor, something small to get these handicap uh accounts that we have and the the small roads that we can't uh traverse up and down with the big trucks. So um, so that's where that participation from, but like I say, all of them, the the truck that we had quoted the first time has now changed in price by thirteen to fifteen thousand dollars um over a thirty day uh number. They did find another truck. It's a different model. Uh, the first one was a General Motors vehicle. This one is a Isuzu. Um, they do have one on the ground and they cannot guarantee that they would have it within fifteen days. So I'm not sure if this vehicle will be over. And then if that happens, we're probably looking at a two-year factor for that, for this emergency vehicle as well. So all this does is kick the can so far down the road. Um, I'm not sure how the city is going to uh uh provide this service as we are currently servicing this, the residents that uh that we're doing now.
Mister Francisco, Denise, Counselor Bene, Counselor Denise Benavides.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to state that, I mean, this has been quite a while since this was first brought up. Can we maybe just get with the city manager, with the directors and and see what Mr. Rennick needs and see how quickly we can get it to him so that we can just get it through the process as quickly as we can? Or if they need to be emergency, then maybe we just make them emergency so that we can get them purchased?
If you don't mind my uh interrupting, uh, I did provide this information to uh the interim city manager. Uh, I mean, I wasn't very specific of what the attorney needed, but I did provide all of the contracts that the city had uh with the city. And all this information is actually on the CES website. It goes by uh every single vendor. There's probably thousands of them. Um, so I did go through a special training for uh, it took me about three hours to go through this training on CES. Um, I I know what happened with the city. Um, I think that it can be easily rectified. Um, however, it's going to take, you know, uh procurement, as you, as you say, to uh to be on board with this. I I do know what happened. And I think that it could be easily rectified, and I think that this this purchase can be easily done, be done correctly. Uh, if you will, but that's about all I really have to say about that.
Counselor Aaron Salazar.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, John, I I do see this vehicle, the mini packer truck as an emergency. I do agree with you. I can't lose any more employees. It is hard to fill employees, and if they are getting hurt and trying to fill these pickup trucks with bags and, you know, not everyone's throwing all their trash and they're not bagging it. You are having trash flying all over the place. I agree with you. I, oh, Mayor, I think this is an emergency uh situation because it's it's hard to, you know, dump these dumpsters by hand, filling up these vehicles, then you go to another truck, you dump it into a or you dump it after the vehicle. Yeah, I'll be handling it a few times rather than just once. And that's what I mean to say, just it is an emergency situation.
Mayor Pro Tem Peggy Sue Martinez.
Thank you. I I also agree that it's very important to have the most uh the safest equipment possible for all our staff, uh inclusive of this situation. Uh, I wanted Mister Francisco to touch base a little bit on what you've learned about CES over the last two weeks and how it affects how we do business with them. Could you touch base on that a little bit?
Yeah, um, so I was made aware that I don't, that I believe um wholeheartedly that uh that the entire transaction was not completed thoroughly uh as as uh some of us were always getting CES, whether it was the path of least resistance or not, it was still a legal way for us to do this. I think that the processes or the processes we did not have in place was to follow through with uh getting onto the CES website. Providing these quotes, which I have already done to CES to to give us a listing that every single item on the list uh is covered by CES on these, on these these two invoices that I have here are one hundred percent CES. The last process that has to go over, once we get the purchase order, if this, and this has happened already, so let's, the purchase order gets, we've been doing everything right with the purchase order, getting that to the vendor. What hasn't been happening is once the check is cut, CES is not, has not been notified, and this check has gone directly to the vendor. Minus that one step of going to CES. Um, I went through about an hour training with uh with CES and it's a, it's a, it's a super, super simple uh process to go over. It's it's amazingly simple. Um, so I've been, I I actually have been uh on that. So the city actually has a couple of people that are signed in to do this. No, actually, there's three of them. So the three people, there there was, there was four. Uh, one of, one of them does not work here anymore. Uh, so I was able to get her removed just by my my verbal saying, this was a, what was her name? Belosseus' last name. Josephine Belosseus, she was on there. Um, Anna Hall is on there, Jeff Sargent is on there, and now myself is on there. So those are the only ones. Uh, so minus Josephine, the only ones that are on there currently are uh and and Jeff and Anna both, I I, as soon as I got off this training, I went straight to Anna Hall's office and uh she had, this was the first time she'd heard of it. So I was kind of to be honest with you, I was kind of exciting to, excited to know that this is a training process that has been skipped with the turnover of employees that are not sharing the information with with uh this. And it's, it's, it's a tragic mistake that's the city is going to have to pay for. Whatever's gonna happen, but I can, I can assure you that this one will be done right if it's allowed to go through. Um, but like I say, I think that uh that one process was uh was, it's it's tragic mistake. But I think that uh, I think that it can be moved on and and continue forward.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mayor. So that's really what I wanted from you, Mister Francisco. I I want us to all have an understanding that the city of Espanola did not follow the CES process correctly in the past. It was a finding in the audit that found that we were not going through CES in total. What was happening is
The correct language actually isn't going to CES total. It was just, we weren't in, we were in violation of procurement code and how we were obtaining the purchase of goods and services, which was utilizing CES.
Right. So what has happened is that after that meeting, meeting with the auditor's office and understanding that we didn't do something correctly. So we have a responsibility to look at it correctly, to correct the behavior and to change the policy. That's what's happening here. It's frustrating. It's frustrating for the fire department. We want that training center so bad. It's crazy. And we want you guys to have the truck so bad. It's crazy.
Yeah, no, I understand. And like I said, and I'm I'm looking at this even outside of the city of Espanola, mistakes uh can easily be made by the, by the movement of employees moving from one person to another. Um, I have seen this happen a jillion times. I'm, you know, I'm 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 in the older part of the generation, so this is something that I, that I've seen. Uh, some people want to hold on to certain information and not share it. And what that does is that hurts the very entity that we're all striving to provide a service to. Now, the service um uh, everybody has their own uh idea of how important their services and uh we all are we are, all are important because we all serve uh the constituents and the public of the city of Espanola. And we have, uh, you know, we just need to have the tools to be able to do this. And I think that CES is an awesome tool for us to be able to use. Um, if we can, if we can actually do it right and and train everybody in my position and up, anybody that is getting quotes to know what CES is, because I mean, I I can tell you from uh working back at the state, you know, I I can tell you right at, right up front that my thing was, look at, look at CES and CES has, I'm gonna be honest with you, CES has some pretty awesome stuff. I I I also tripped over some information that I got accidentally that I shared with the city manager. And this, this information was a a quote on some roll-off dumpsters. Um, and I I want to keep this as short as possible, but I think that it's super important for you guys to understand this. So the guy that I got the quote from was a New Mexico vendor and he's, he builds dumpsters and they build, they build roll-offs. So I got this quote for roll-offs and he says, do you want a CES uh quote or do you want my quote? And I said, you know, go ahead and send them both. Let's see what, let's see what it's all about. So he did. He's having both quotes and it was as, I looked at the quotes. I didn't look at it very carefully. The first thing you want to look at is the bottom line. And it was about a ten thousand dollar difference. So I looked at it, said, wow, you know, this is might not be such a, that's might not be such a good idea going to CES. I thought, said that myself, and I showed it to the city manager at the time. Um, and uh, it just kind of went stale. We didn't do anything with this. So I still have them and I actually showed them to the city manager here. And I, and I found the reason in behind this. Well, CES has a standard that's up here. If we let the vendor choose for us what materials to use, that level is down here because they want us to be able to go through them steel and make a better price for us. But the quality of the material is different and it's clear. So CES has this, in my view, just by total accident, and I have this information to to provide to you, not today, because I didn't bring it with me, but I can provide it to you tomorrow morning. Um, that the quality, the the gauge of the steel was different. So when you're looking at the gauge of steel on a roll-off, for instance, when you're throwing some heavy material in there, while it's going to dent it and ding it and and rip it apart faster if you're using the correct material. So um CES would have saved our button. Um, if we would have gone for CES on this matter. So I'm just saying that the quality is, is a difference. It's not apples for apples. It is apples for a peach. So.
Recommendation to the maker of the motion to approve the agenda is to go ahead and move item C and T, C and D to a special meeting next week and to weave item E on the agenda as an emergency purchase.
The motion, maker of the motion was Counselors Alasal Torres, correct, Ms. Martin? Mister, Counselor Salazar Torres.
I'm all right with that. Thank you.
I uh, I just wanted to commend the staff for making strides to review how we obtain the procurement of services. This goes back several years that the city of Espanola has not procure, been procuring good services uh for obviously the conduct of business on a day-in, day-out basis. Thank you, Mister Francisco, for that uh very interesting discussion about it. Um, we're taking the initiative. I've already discussed with Mister Lohan on his first day about getting the training needed for all the directors to be in compliance, to ensure that this doesn't happen again. Again, this isn't anyone doing anything bad. It's just unfortunately, over several years, the way we've been procuring goods and services has not been in compliance with the state's procurement code. So we're making the strides to do that, and I'm really grateful for the training that we're gonna be looking at bringing to the table. Um, that's so important for us to move the city forward because obviously, as it's discussed, it'll be coming out. It's one of our audit findings. We don't want to keep making the same mistakes that have been happening. So I want to thank Mister Francisco. I want to thank everyone for the discussion this evening about it. With no further discussion, I'm gonna call for the vote to approve the agenda. Counselor Annette Rodriguez.
We also recognize uh uh Assistant Fire Chief John Wickersham for all his efforts in pushing this fire department training facility with all the passion that he has and just making sure that we get this done next week uh as quickly as we can. So thank you, Mister Wickersham, for all your hard work.
Thank you. Ms. Garcia, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Pro Tem Peggy Sue Martinez. Counselors Dennis Tim Salazar.
For the motion.
Daniel J. Martinez.
In favor.
Justin Salazar Torres.
In favor.
Dorothy D. Valdez.
For the motion.
Denise D. Benavides.
In favor.
Nanette D. Rodriguez.
For the motion.
Erin J. Salazar.
In favor.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The agenda for this evening's meeting is adopted. It was lengthy discussion, but I think it was very helpful for us to be able to understand what was going on and such moving forward. And grateful to all the staff that have been looking at doing that training to ensure approve our processes. Um, the consent agenda before you this evening is the adoption of the minutes for September seventh, September twelfth, September twenty-first.
Motion to approve as presented.
Motion to approve the, as uh consent agenda by Mayor Pro Tem Peggy Sue Martinez, second by Counselor Aaron Salazar. If there's no opposition, I'm gonna have the consent agenda adopted by acclamation. And being known. Okay, public comment, public comment this evening is limited to two minutes. Ms. Garcia, would you please?
Bethany Bradley.
Good evening. Um, I wanna address a few things. So on September twenty-eighth, I sent out an email to um to Eric and I also sent it out to every single council member regarding the repairs that needed to be addressed on. I was responded to by a few, and I understand you guys have to respond individually because if you respond to the multiple email, that it's considered a form. I understand that, but I only received a response from Denise, Dennis Tim, and Manny. Um, I also sent out a text message on the twenty-ninth and received no response from the mayor, Peggy Sue, and I can't remember who else I sent it out to. So I would appreciate a response if I sent out an email, just knowing that you guys had received it and that you guys have knowledge that these things are going on. Also, I wanted to address um, Danny. Last Monday, I was at Chili's and I know some things went down here at City Hall. And in Chili's, I overheard a conversation which somebody probably didn't even realize I was sitting there. Um, speaking poorly about city employees, which was not necessary when you're sitting at a bar and many people from this town are sitting in there, including me, my friend, and five other people um who were within ear range. Really disgusting, some of the things that I heard. And those people that were spoken of do know, um, and now have knowledge of what was said while I was there. So I'm just bringing it to your guys' attention that you might want to not tell your city employees not to sit in the middle of Chili's and complain.
Thank you, Ms. Bethany. Christine Bustos.
Good evening, Mayor, counselors here and online. I am here this evening because um I was a little bit upset at something. Uh, I read on social media Ms. Cynthia Lantini has been posting some very troubling things. And uh her vendetta to the city council has now um kind of come over to the downtown action team, and that's why I'm here. Uh, I have it here in front of me. It says that because I, I had, I'm, I'm, I don't know if you all know, I did write an op-ed that was published in the paper, and at the end of it, I said that I was probably not going to do the light parade this year because of the attitude of violence these days. I witnessed the shooting at the county a couple of weeks ago and and it affected us, you know, and being in charge of a event that large is very frightening because you take responsibility for everybody who comes. So anyway, but I do want to clear up a couple of things. She is claiming that we're not having the light parade because I didn't pay the city four thousand dollars. Uh, that is incorrect. About five years ago, when Mayor Javier Sanchez was here, we were approached because we had to get help with the parade that year, and he asked that we pay for the overtime that the city personnel would have to do. We did agree to that. We never received a bill. So if we owe the city four thousand dollars, I wish someone would give us a buck and we'd be happy to pay it. Also, on a personal note, she accuses me of um of, uh, let's see, oh, of making the downtown action team defunct and basically that I tortured and I guess I ran out of things, but I'll be happy to answer questions when it is time for counselor comments.
Thank you, Ms. Bustos.
Ms. Garcia.
Steven.
It's going
It's going Eric. How are you, sir? Doing good. Doing good. Doing good. Nice. Nice. How are you doing? You missing? No, huh? Anyways, at least I got a laugh out of it. Everyone laughing. So let's get down to business. Um. You guys had a public safety meeting last week regarding some speed cameras throughout the city of Espanola. My tax dollars don't pay law enforcement to sit at a private parking lot and chit chat. That's not their job. Their job is to patrol for the safety of the people, not to sit at Walmart. Sit at Lowe's, sit at Starbucks, sit at Walgreens. I never knew a law enforcement was hired as a private security for these private companies. That were our tax dollars go. You guys are talking about ranking out cameras. I wonder how much tax dollars that's going to be taken up from the city to use these cameras. This gentleman right here, that's the director. I believe that money, whatever money you're going to use for the cameras, should go to his purchase of his vehicle. That is needed. That's more important than revenue for the city. You know, the, the officers that are here, they should do what they're hired to do. And patrol the city of Espanola. He can laugh while you want, buddy. It's okay. People see on camera, bro. Your life. They're on Zoom. Debbie, I don't know how you got into this business or how you.
Thank you, Steven. Your time is up. That would be all, Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor comments? Anyone? Councillor comments? Mayor Protan Peggy Sue Martinez.
I, uh, first and foremost, want to thank the water department, uh, Bryce and your staff today for uh, the incredible pressure that you had to endure, not only with the water pressure, but the pressure from the community as far as people having the water pressure, not having any water for most of the day. Uh, unbelievable that it had to go as far as McCurdy to get that shut down. That blows me away. I figure that at some level, we have to figure out why our shut off system is not functioning the way that we need it to function. We need to rectify that as soon as possible. But you guys are amazing. I mean, uh, they're still out there doing what they need to do. And, uh, making sure that, that the community and the water restored to safe, clean water as soon as possible. Uh, I had numerous calls mostly about the fire hydrants are just leaking. What the heck is the city doing losing water? So I just need everybody to understand there that there's, there's a reason that they bleed that line. And most of it is for air and dirt and other debris to come out of that line that might have gotten in there. That we don't want traveling down into the, into the city lines. So like I said, uh, thanks to your staff, first and foremost, for putting the pressure on the college to fix that line. Because we were losing lots and lots of water, uh, that was not being metered. And we certainly appreciate that. And then just the staff and their effort to try and get that pressure shut down enough to fix the line. Uh, I want you guys to know that that staff missed their lunch today. They were not able to have lunch. Uh, and they still are out there. That, that's some devotion to their jobs and to this community. And we just have to really appreciate that. So thank you to your department and for everything they do. Again, uh, thank you to John Wickersham and everything that the fire department is doing. Uh, five in the morning, you guys are rolling. You guys are amazing. Also want to thank the police department and, uh, let everyone know that the city of Espanola has not even passed, uh, any situation with cameras as of yet. The conversation that has been had is an idea and the purpose of that is to provide uh, uh, speed enforcement in areas where we have not been providing it thus far. We've had numerous people come into chambers, elderly people saying that they're afraid to drive on McCurdy Road because of the speeders that are happening there. These are just tools that we're considering utilizing. Nothing has passed. Nothing has been uh, come to this committee as far as, uh, an ordinance to pass it. Everything that has been discussed has been as an idea and as a tool. We definitely are interested in any tool that would improve public safety in this community. I personally want to thank the police officers for the work that they do. I know that you guys work very hard. I know that you guys are devoted. And I believe in the staff that we have. So thank you very much for your work.
Councillor Manny Martinez.
Thank you, sir. Uh, I too want to thank, um, water department and everything for all that they've been doing. But I would like it if the city manager would kind of give a report as to the cause of this. Water pressure issue for today, just so, um.
Can we talk?
People will understand what was going on.
Councillor, can we talk about this during his report?
Yes, that's fine. I, that, that would be fine for that. Uh, I also just, uh, want to ask Ms. Bustos if she would reconsider. Uh, I know, I understand her concerns about not having the light parade this year. Uh, but I would hope that the downtown action team would reconsider that. A lot of these groups, uh, do this out of fear and to keep people from having such functions as, as the light parade and, and other issues. And, and I would hope that she reconsiders that, uh, for the thousands of people that do enjoy the parade. Thank you.
Councillor Justin Salazar Torres.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I just have concerns of the punctuality of, uh, this governing body. Um, in respect to everybody that tends to join in or wants to be at meetings, um, in the start of our meetings and what time we do start them. I just wanted to address that concern. Thank you.
Councillor Aaron Salazar. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, officers. And be safe. Um, thank you to all the department, John, for all the hard work you do, you know, getting all these quotes, water, the parks. All, all, all of them. Thank you. My question is to Ms. Bustos. Are we going to consider, are you considering having the light parade?
I, I was going to let her, I was going to do the matters from the mayor. Let's, let's, let's wait, Teeny.
Okay, thank you, Teeny.
Any other councillor comments? Well, thank you, members of the council. Um, for my report, I just wanted to, Mr. Luhana has hit the ground running. We've had a meeting with DOT, if Don Yate Bridge lights fixed, um, he's been with them about the State Road seventy six project. State Road sixty eight, uh, he's meeting with the tribes informed me because of his connections on Thursday. Uh, Mr. Luhana has hit the ground running, uh, with bringing staff to the city of Espanola. We're really excited about the work that he's producing for our city. I just wanted to clarify, there's a couple of things, um. There, there, there's some misunderstanding that some councillors, I don't think, understand what a fiscal year is. Um, this is fiscal year twenty four that we're in, just so everyone knows. The audit is from FY twenty twenty two, that began on July first, twenty twenty one. And it goes until July thirty first, I mean, June thirtieth, twenty twenty two, that is the FY twenty two budget. And then we finished the FY twenty three budget. So there's individuals in this community. I just hope you know that when you're out talking in the community, you need to be educated and informed. Uh, it helps you become a better informed councillor and such to do your job here in this committee. But just so you know, we're in FY twenty four's budget fiscal year this year. Ms. Bustos and I had a long, lengthy discussion about this last night about bringing back the light parade. I kept pushing her and pestering her. Um, I understand she has a lot of concerns about safety and such here in our community and I don't blame her. Uh, Ms. Bustos has dedicated her life to this community for the last thirty years, putting this light parade together and looking at the wonderful output that it produces for the community, which is lodger stacks and people, and not just lodger stacks, but that's also including gross receipt stacks. Uh, when people come in from out of town, they're staying here in our local hotels. I know the end of the delta gets booked months in advance. Uh, people eat at our restaurants, they're shopping in our community. This is known as the greatest light parade in the state of New Mexico. And for that, Ms. Bustos, we're grateful for all the work that you've been doing for all those years with downtown action team, Main Street. I'm gonna let you turn it over because I talked about it last night with you and I really put you on the hot seat and I don't know, you got kind of mad. You might not go hem my curtains now.
That's true, but, um, Mayor Councillors, this is a very hard decision for me. This was actually going to be my last. Uh, this year it's the twenty seventh light parade. I've done all but two. And then the one, of course, that we missed during the pandemic. But, um, again, you know, the, the actions of people in the recent past have, um, have really given me pause. Uh, just as I was saying before, you know, uh, Ms. Lantini went on public media and saying that we're not having the light parade. Because I tanked the downtown action team. Uh, just for your, her information and, and yours, and I'm sure you know, I have here for you that I'll turn over to you. Our, um, good standing with the IRS, our good standing with the state secretary of state and our bank. Department where, says that we currently have, um, four thousand seven hundred ninety six dollars in the bank, so we're not broke. So, uh, everything that was posted were blatant lies. And I do want to tell people about how we work with the city for the parade. We do that by a cosponsorship agreement. We do not pay the city. The city actually gives us in-kind services. The one and only time, as I said, that we ever entered into any kind of agreement about payment was that one year under Mayor Sanchez. And again, I never received a bill, so I assumed, and maybe that was wrong on my part. I assumed it was put into the cosponsorship agreement. But if it is outstanding, then, you know, we'll do it. Um, I probably would. I've gotten a lot of positive feedback also from people who don't want to see the parade gone. And I probably would consider it if we were willing to all work together. And, uh, again, you know, I don't want to say anything happened like what happened at the county a couple of weeks ago. And we do have to work together and, you know, I've worked with the chief here on years, you know, and, um, it's something, we had to hire extra security for the fiestas this year. We took turns staying there all night just to make sure everything was secure and safe. So, um, yeah, you know, we can do it and it probably will be my last year. But the Chamber of Commerce has approached me and they are maybe willing to take it over after the downtown action team. Which, as you guys know, there's eight of us. We're not a big, a big thing. But it will be rough this year. We're kind of late, so we're going to have to really fundraise and do stuff. Anyway, yes, councillor.
I just want to say thank you for everything you're doing. I do not let myself be defined by anybody except those people that I respect. And I feel like we're getting caught up in a lot of things that are being posted and not being posted. I myself do not get on social media. I really believe in what you're doing. I believe in the mission that's in your mind and in your heart. And the city of Espanola is, it has the electric parade and you know, I've said it before. It is the best event that happens in the city of Espanola, hands down, all year long.
Well, we do have to do it. I mean, we started it when your daughter was a baby and now you have a grandbaby.
I want her to be able to enjoy what we've been able to enjoy all our lives. And probably even at some level, take him for granted for that. So I myself want to let you know that I'm willing to help you with anything that you need. Uh, consider yourselves nine, not eight.
Well, then, uh, if we're going to do this, uh, councillor Rodriguez, I hope we can get on your community services uh, meeting as soon as possible. We're going to have to get it rolling.
And I'm also here to help however I can, other than the committee.
Just remember that when it's thirty degrees and we're outside.
There's hand warmers.
Well, I didn't get a choice. I'm always volunteering to. I'm voluntarily, Teeny, also.
Um, thank you for allowing me to, uh, to speak my concerns. And again, you know, if people want to pick on me, as you say, councillor Martinez, I really don't care. But when it rolls over onto organizations that I care about or people that I care about, that's what bothers me.
City manager report. So, Mr. Luhana, I think your top prop, item to talk about tonight is the water.
Yes, sir, Mayor. So I'm glad my, um, water, to the gentleman, our director. I'll beat this show with this this evening, but I'll start, start it off by saying, um, we were formed this morning, my director's meeting, Mayor, councillors, that the water was going to be shut off due to an issue at the college. And it was going to be a forty-five minute shut off, which obviously, you know, turned out to an entire day. We did what we could. We, we don't, this was not a city issue. I want to make that very clear, Mayor, councillors, and to your constituents. And those that are listening and those that are watching on YouTube, this was not a city issue. This was the colleges issue. We were just tasked with fact to shut the water off in order to accommodate their servicing of their, their water issue. The, the mayor and I, uh, being the, the lack of communication, I have to take the blunt of that. The lack of communications should have started with City Hall and getting expedited to those that were being affected, especially the west side of Espanola. And Presbyterian Hospital. The mayor and I visited the hospital today to ensure that we're working on the issue and that it was, and it could be done in a timely manner. I want to apologize to the citizens, to your representatives, uh, representative website, Mayor Proten. Councillor En Salazar, Councillor Inet Rodriguez. Uh, all the councillors, you're all affected. You all got phone calls, I'm sure, because I heard from most of you. And so tomorrow with the, the onboarding of our administrative, executive administrative assistant to the mayor myself, these issues will be headed off. And, and at that point is, as soon as we're in more communication with my director. And, and, and moving forward with getting information out to the public in a more expeditable manner. Uh, I want to turn it over, Mayor, to, to Mr. Abeta for his, his commentary on the, on the whole issue.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Proten, uh, members of the council. So this job was supposed to be completed last Thursday and Friday, um, was the time that the college gave us. They never reached out to me to confirm it. Yesterday, I got a phone call from TLC saying that they needed the water off. I told them that yesterday was a holiday. Everybody's at home. There's no way we could do this yesterday. They said we can do it tomorrow, nine, nine thirty. I was, my impression of my knowledge of the water system was I was only going to shut down from the college, south of Triple S, east of Onyate. There's only so many valves, three, four valves that we were planning on shutting off. No one else was supposed to be affected by this. Um, unfortunately, that wasn't the case. We ended up shutting down around twenty-five valves all day. And the last valve I shut down was closer to state police. And that's the one that actually shut off pretty much everything. This was very unforeseen. We know now what we need to do. There's actually plenty of, um, things that we can buy out there. That can help us like this, there's a live insertion, uh, machine we can buy. We can insert a valve live without having to do any interruptions in the water. But that costs about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to purchase. Um, we can buy all this equipment to help benefit us. But there was only four of us out there for the city. Me and three other employees out there all day trying to shut this water down. I mean, we could purchase these things that help us, but without, you know, people to actually operate it. You know, there's no good, good in that either. So I do want to thank.
Who was out there with you today, please?
Um, yeah, so it's, uh, parents, my assist, he's my foreman, water operation foreman. We had Christian Labor Moya, he's our operator level one. And Justin Lopez, he's our maintenance worker. Um, and then myself, um, we're out there. Um, since nine fifteen is when we started shutting down the water. We didn't get the water shut down until about four o'clock. Four o'clock, we actually got the complete water shut down at the college. They repaired it. We turned, started turning water on about, uh, five o'clock. So right now the hospital has water. I don't know if it's fully pressurized yet, but they have water at the hospital, um, since six thirty. I don't know if it's fully pressurized yet, but they have water at the hospital um, since six-thirty.
I just want to say thank you. I know that this was something that had been contentious between the college and the city because it was an unmetered line. And because it was uh, I, if, if I'm not, if I'm correct, it's a private line, private fire suppression line, but it's unmetered. So I think we need to do that differently. I think anytime that we install even a fire suppression line, it needs to be metered at some level.
We, we cannot, it's, it's against the law to meter a fire line because we don't charge for fire protection.
Well, I really feel like then we need to pass an ordinance that talks about the, them having the responsibility to maintain that line. Once they're notified that there's a leak, they have a certain amount of time to fix that leak in that line. Because I know that that water ran and ran and ran and ran and ran, and I'm not saying days, I'm not saying weeks. Months, months, and possibly even more than a year. So it's, it's time for the city to be a little bit defensive with how we handle situations like that. We definitely want to work with the college. We want to do everything we can to be their best partner. But at the same time, my constituents are paying for every drop of water that they're utilizing. And we can't afford to have anybody having a leak with water like that, just leaving our system. And what happened today with you guys having to shut that down and how crazy that got. I mean, that, that was pretty wild. I thought the one on Caia Vuelta was wild. That was way worse. And uh, I give you guys all the credit in the world, uh, like you said. Definitely looking into this live insertion deal, but also figuring out ways to fill your staff completely, making sure that you have the helpers that you need to get the jobs done and to keep this water up and running in this community. So thank you.
Thank you, Bryce. Uh, thank you, guys, for all the hard work. I know it's not easy looking for all these valves and covering them, shutting them off. But did you guys use this, you know, maybe as the lessons learned and, or do you guys have a map of this valve that we shut off, shut off this section? Do you guys sign that down?
We do have a map. We have a couple of different maps. Um, we went off the maps. We went off of um, knowledge from previous employees. But we've been learning so much about this water system, not just right now. With this water system that we were taught and it was, it was wrong. It was a wrong thing. I don't know if it was misunderstood or what happened, but somewhere along the line, it did not end up, is it pretty tough one, right? When you say one thing and it ends up somewhere? I think that's what happened throughout the years. Um, because we're learning so much more about this water system. Like I said, I was told there was three, four valves that we needed. Shut those valves off. It wasn't the case. I isolated Onyate and railroads side, college. Didn't do anything. I isolated this, I did this, didn't do anything. But I found out that line is to be connected off of Fairview somewhere, because as soon as I shut off the main line, we eventually shut down the water, but also shut down everything else. Yes.
So I want to also go on that too. It's interesting. So Bryce, there's also, there's some people had outages on McCurdy Road too.
We shut it below our tank. So I was filling up our tank, which is good because I saw we were using water. That's how I figured out um, where the water was going, because we had a hydrant going, because that hydrant, if that hydrant went down, we know the college went down, but that hydrant was flowing all day, so that's how I figured out that it was gonna be off of
Well, I would recommend um, Counselor Rodriguez getting a hold of, she's very close to former city manager and public works director, Mr. Jim Farmer. He was our public works director in that back in the seventies and eighties. I'd recommend Mr. Lujan getting a hold of Mr. Farmer and seeing if he'll come here and meet with Bryce and, and Rodney with the lines and discussing about that. Because I know a lot of the lines that were plotted up, the city were done with Frankie Narapo and Mr. Jim Farmer. And so I think if you can set that up for us, Counselor Rodriguez, that would be great.
Yes, that would be, that'd be, that'd be great.
Counselor Manny Martinez.
Uh, thank you. Um, I just want to let you know that the, the water did, the, or the shortage of water pressure uh, got as far as the Meadow Acres area as well as McCurdy Road. Uh, just to let you know that they did get that far, if that's any help as far as uh, figuring out what we need to do. Uh, also, uh, a while back, Marvin Martinez, uh, former waters, uh, supervisor for the city as well, has indicated that he's willing to come in and and help with anything when it comes to the locating lines and stuff, if we would need him. So I just wanted to let you know that as well. Thank you. And thank you, Bryce, for all that you, your guys are doing. I know it's not an easy, an easy job uh, being out there and, and all that water, but thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Annette Rodriguez.
I just want to reiterate what, what everyone else has said is thank you to you and your team for the job that you did. Really small team. Um, and so I'm sure that you are working super hard. Um, and we recognize that. Thank you for your dedication.
Thank you.
And please refer to the rest of your team as well.
I will.
Thank you again, Bryce. Thank you to the water, wastewater. I know streets comes out too and helps you. You know, we're a short staff, but we're grateful for all the work you guys put out. Uh, Mr. Lujan, I want to commend you and work, week three, working on just to, Mr. Lujan was coming up with some communication plan strategy when the executive administrator starts tomorrow. And so we're really excited about that. And this, this affects every entity. I just want you all to be aware. I mean, you know, it happens at the co-op when there's outages, and I mean, you're talking about three, four thousand people out and how we get the message to the councillors about when we're gonna get ETA when there's crews dispatched. I mean, so it's not just isolated here to the city with, 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 when we have an outage for water. It just seems to be that we have a lot of problems when we don't have water because people can't use the bathroom and such and can't conduct basic services like that. So thank you, guys, for all you do. And, and you know, it's, it's one thing that we're gonna have to look at, an outage alert system. Uh, we have a very outdated, unfortunately, billing system, but uh, pulling all that data information, if we could isolate it to the areas. Once we get to a good GIS mapping system and, 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 and calculating who's out, what's the ETA and such. And so I, I really want to thank you, Mr. Lujan, and thank you, Bryce, for all your work today.
Thank you.
Mayor Proten.
RoboText setup at all? Is it possible that we can look into that? I think it's very important.
So we're gonna have to see. I know, I know at the co-op, that system is very expensive. And you have to opt into the system when you sign up for a bill because you don't want it to be labeled as a telemarketing situation. You have to opt in. So if we were to do that here, we'd probably have to get a hold of each of the consumers and ask them to opt in. But I think there's a way we could do that easily.
Mr. Lujan.
Thank you, Mayor. Bryce, I want to commend you and your people. Um, Mayor, as you know, councillors, you know, you kept me abreast of the situation throughout the day. And as it got worse and worse, I, I, I believe I had Sally send out an email to the councillors and into, into my department heads, into most employees informing them, because we're shut down here in City Hall. Um, so we had to go to the east side to use the bathrooms, so. Hey, Mayor, for an interesting afternoon. But, you know, Bryce, to your crew, thank you so much. Thank you. And Elijah, Elijah helped out today. I made out a call to make sure if they need to assist in any way that he possibly could. So Elijah, thank you for all these. So thank you. Thank you, Bryce.
Thank you.
Now you tell us, huh?
Thank you, Bryce.
Mr. Lujan. Mayor, councillors, I just, as I was informed strongly on taking this position, move forward and move strong and move fast. I want to inform the mayor, the councillors, and most of you already know I did hire um, a finance director, Mrs. April Moyam. We interviewed her for two and a half hours, myself, Police Chief Garcia, former uh, um, DFA local government director. Uh, Rob Apolaco is currently handling our projects. And of course, Sally Baxter sat in the interview, but the, the interview was conducted by myself, the chief and, and Mr. Apolaco. We found her to be very compre- comprehensive in her interview. She um, understood everything, she knew everything. She has to hit the ground running with the audits. She has to hit the ground running, getting this budget prepared. And the, the excitement that she's bringing to the position, the, the, the the demeanor that she's bringing, I believe the chief of police would agree with me. Um, because he met with her before we even decided to hire her. I met with him in private, Mr. Apolaco, to go over the, the, the interview application, because it did not, it extended beyond the questions that are provided to you by HR. We wanted to make sure we're bringing a qualified person. I reached out to people in local government, the Deputy Director of DFA, uh, Amalia Seis, and Amalia uh, gave her high, high rating, the directors from the finance of, of Department of Transportation as well. The, the entities that, that, that she works with currently through the program she runs through DFA. So we are stealing an employee from DFA. And she has assured us and the chief that she's gonna hit the ground running. So um, I wanted her to be here tonight. She couldn't make it. She was packing up her DFA office in Santa Fe too. She is a resident of Chi Mayo. So we do have a local girl and um coming to work for us, and she has applicants in the hopper for the financial analyst, and I'm sure for the um, the other position, the um comptroller. So she'll be able to pick her staff based on how she feels they, they are qualified, but um, I did take everything as I do everything in the council and then the mayor, of course, delegate to me and we hit the ground running. As I expect Ms. Moya to do as well. Um, as the mayor mentioned earlier, we did meet with the Department of Transportation in regards to my attendance to uh, the Public Works Committee meeting. And the projects that are pending, these are also projects that have been pending on the list in the meeting I held today with Mr. Apolaco with Sally Baxter as well, to go over our projects and to prioritize them and to look to where we might be able to ship some money. So as we go through that process and as I bring April into the fold, we can address that, but always with the guidance of, of starting with the finance committee and the, the governing body, always in the loop because we're talking about millions of dollars. And we are not gonna lose these monies because I assure Mr. Apolaco will do whatever it is to accommodate. I am meeting tomorrow, as per the meeting the mayor and I had with the Executive Director, Jerry Valdez, from New Mexico Department of Transportation with the District Private Construction Engineer, Mr. Javier Martinez. And we'll be meeting here at City Hall at nine AM. And I just want to go with them, and you really, as the mayor and I did, why is the City of Espanola being charged more money to offset a redesign? And it, it might bother me. I met with the mayor pro ten, and I assured that we'd take care of it. That's what we're gonna do tomorrow. We, by the mayor and I did that. Excuse me, Mayor?
It's pertaining to State Road seventy-six.
It's pertaining to State Road seventy-six, it's pertaining to uh, the other projects in the hopper that we currently have, because they are shovel-ready. Some of them are ninety percent. We are ready to get these projects off the ground because the people need them and they've been waiting for too long. Engineering firms have been taking advantage of this city for too long. It's time to get the money that we paid them out of them. We, we, we need to put them to work. We need to put people in the valley that, that can work for the construction companies and in different capacities to work as well. And that's what it does. It does create jobs when we get these projects rolling. Now, um, in our meetings and discussions with Mr. Apolaco, I did reach out to Senator Ben Ray Lujan's office. They'll be attending a meeting also Thursday set up with Senator Heinrichs and Congresswoman Fernandez's office on the twenty-two million dollars from New Mexico sixty-eight. We've got twenty-seven days, I believe, left before the feds can pass another budget that they're working on, which includes our twenty-two million dollars. Thanks to Mr. Apolaco, he's able to refinance this and get it in the budget. This project, from what I'm understanding, we're gonna phase out, phase one, phase two, phase three, phase four. There's gonna be five phases. And um, it'll be over a period anywhere between five to ten years at twenty-two million dollars, but it's all in New Mexico sixty-eight. I personally would like to see at least the two first phases get off the ground. Because it's important, because it'll establish the next three, but it will continue that we don't have to be, continue to maintain those roads and patching them up as we go and, and prepare the next doors. These are total reconstruction projects. So it's from the ground up. So we gotta look at that as well as the studies as well. Um, so I had that meeting Thursday. Uh, I want to thank Mr. Apolaco. He, he has been great to work with the mayor council and when DFA recommended him, that was a great recommendation. It's great to work with him. He's a true professional. And, and he gets the job done, and he clearly understands the needs of this community. Um, I want to switch gears to planning, planning in Zolo. Mayor, on the agenda tonight, I, I asked for you to appoint two members of this, the governing body to work with the uh, a nine-member uh, planning commission during the winter as, as it slows down to rewrite the, the land use code. Uh, I met with, with our land use director, and she has informed me that it's pretty outdated, that we need to bring it up to par and bring it up towards the state statutes are, are requiring us to be at. Um, I agreed with her. I met with the uh, Chairman of the Planning Commission, Mr. G R Trujillo, and he also concurred with me. And so we, I, 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 that's why I asked for that tonight, Mayor, and explaining that, that during the winter months, whoever the mayor selects to, to participate that um, you're, you're willing to, to work with it because it is an important part of our community. And how do we move this community direction as far as development? And with the big jobs coming into Los Alamos, the next five to ten years, twenty-five thousand new jobs, where are they gonna live? Who's gonna provide that housing? We gotta look at that as, as we expand our community and take advantage of the GRTs that we could possibly get. Um, so thank you, Mayor, for indulging me on that. Um, as the mayor, also, we, we, I did hire uh, an executive administrator for myself and the mayor. Her name is Victoria, or she likes to be called Esperanza Trujillo. She'll be starting tomorrow. Um, and we did hire, we did an emergency hire to fill the position of the vacant city clerk. And we hired Yvette Ortega. And both women, I believe, Ms. Ortega also will be coming tomorrow for her drug screening. Uh, the background checks were finally turned over to us today. So they're conducted by our police department, and I want to thank Chief and Lieutenant Yazi for expediting, um, because we are lacking staff. Uh, Mayor and councillors, uh, meeting with, he left with Bryce Abeta. I'd like to revisit this when, when our finance director comes forward, how we retain our employees. Not only at that level of where his shop, but at Rodney's or where the sewer plant, John Franco's, Elijah, Chief, we've discussed it, Chief Martinez, I discussed it with him at length. And we need to work to bring our employees up to par. We're losing, we're losing employees to other communities. And we're not having people applying for the job, so we need to make it more attractive, more lucrative to bring qualified people to work here in City Hall. So we'll be presenting a budget that, 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 that's gonna be while within the limitations that we can work to provide what we can for this community. And it starts with our employees. We, we uh, we look, gotta look at the budgets. We gotta clean up our audits. I understand everything. We gotta refocus ourselves on this community, because as I always emphasize to my directors and my meetings with them every, beginning of every weekday of the week, we work for the citizens of Espanola. We need to provide for the citizens of Espanola. And I'm always reminded by the mayor pro ten and her concerns and her her just how much she cares for this community. And I, I got to see that I, I, I went with her to meet with the Humane Society. We, we've, we've had many discussions on how to improve the city, but it starts with the backbone, and the backbone is, is our employees. And they make us and they break us, but we need to be there for them so that they know what we care and that we're gonna be for them, be, be there for them. Um, I've committed to them, Mayor, but I mostly committed to the citizens of Espanola. And uh, with that said, Mayor, I stand for questions.
Mayor Proten, Biggie San Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. Lujan, for uh, for everything that you've done thus far, not only after you started the position, but all the time and effort that you've put into uh, researching, making connections, talking with people and finding out as much information about every single situation that's happening here within the City of Espanola. There's so many, so many things that can take away your attention during the day. So this administrative assistant to me is key in trying to um, trying to keep you focused on moving things forward. Uh, I'm hopeful that we utilize the administrative assistant to turn out fires. And we allow you to run with the football and score the touchdowns for this community. By that, I mean. Uh, projects following through, making sure that. This uh young lady that comes in on finance. Does everything that she can to, to make sense of what is happening with all the books. Especially making sure that every single department has their budget and understands exactly what's going on with it. That is so critical. I think that's the number one thing for me concerning finance. Um, the other thing I wanted to touch base with is um. East Pueblo, the last time I spoke to you, it was ninety percent complete. I'm curious, how do we get that last ten percent so that this is shovel ready and ready to go? I'm also curious as to whether or not. We discussed anything with DOT concerning Me and a month this because uh the last time that I heard from the CM's office prior to you being here. Was that Milamontes was held back. Because of a drainage issue and that we were supposed to connect to a. A drain line that DOT already had an agreement with uh Okeo Winga on. So I need to know if there's been any follow up around that, those two situation.
Mayor, Madam, we approach him. Uh, absolutely. That was, that was a matter of discussion today in our meeting with Mr. Apolaca. Both of the, both projects, East Pueblo and Milamontes are on. Somewhat of a schedule. They, they, they pulled back on it. Um, because of the draining pond on, on Milamontes that is controlled by Okeo Winga. And part of my report, I apologize for, for neglecting this part, but I am meeting with Okeo Winga on Thursday. I've invited Chief Garcia. And Chief Martinez and Chief Wick. And Elijah. To, to attend this meeting uh with Okeo Winga with um. Benny Lujan. And I forget the other gentleman's name that's coming. Um. We've got to hit the ground running with them as well. We've got to hit to agreements because as I asked today. Do we currently have any intertribal government agreements?
No.
I asked the attorney today, am I meeting with them? No, we don't. We need to start establishing them. When you start working with them so that we're held accountable for our end. But as they are as well. And, and it's easy to. To say one thing and do another thing. I understand that there's been some bad situations with Santa Clara, San Jose, San Antonio. But coming to the table. And bringing to light the issues and working on them, listen. Um. And addressing them without any hostility and working together. We could do some great things with them. Um. Our, our, our city is surrounded by them, but as the motto says. We're, we're, we're. Cultures collide, right? Where cultures come together. Yeah, well, we, we're colliding lately, so. But I would rather unite, as, as you said, Madam Mayor. And, but I look forward to meeting with them. And I invite any counselors, anyone that would like to join us because. You know, they, they've come to the table with us that they're going to clear out a lot. They're going to bulldoze it. But they come to us because they need our police assistance. If there's any of the homeless that something happens to, they need our fire and emergency services. Elijah, they're going to need you to help to guide them on how, what, you know, I got an education today that they, the homeless run fish line with razor blades on them. So if you go into the area, you're going to get hurt. And so these are things that, that the, the, the workers from Okeo Winga need to be aware of. So. You know, I, I spoke to the attorney today. Charles, we spoke to the, the intertribal agreements with the city of Espanola. We invite Rio River County to the table. We invite Santa Fe County to the table as we like between those two communities. And we move forward again uh with the best interest of everybody's heart and, and um. To, to, to answer your question, Madam, I approach her so I don't get off subject. Is East Pueblo and Milamontes our high priority right now and, and, and working with, with, with Rob Apolaca? And meeting with DOT, Mr. Mr. Martinez tomorrow. These are going to be discussed and how fast we can get them off the ground because the, you are, you are right, Madam Mayor, pro ten, East Pueblo is ninety percent ready. It is. All that's holding up Milamontes is this. Is Okeo Winga. But as you are correct. The Department of Transportation does have uh. Uh, right away agreements established with, with the Pueblos. And so we'll, we'll work that through as well. To get that project going because that has been long overdue. Both these projects are long overdue. Why we continue to wait is beyond me, but. Let's get them ready. Let's get these projects on the, on. On schedule and done in a timely manner so that. Our community looks better and we can be proud of our learnings. And that's how. I'm glad, you know, again, thank you, Mayor Pro Ten, because having that administrative assistance is going to be very helpful to myself and the mayor, free me up for a lot more than I can do.
I, I just wanted to reiterate to the council that I'm hopeful that once the adminis, executive administrator is hired. That you'll utilize this person for situations, little fires, uh situations with bills, planning and zoning situations. So that we're not taxing the manager. From, from day to day affairs and project management, which is so crucial. I'm really hopeful we can do that. I'm also hopeful that we can reach out and start utilizing this person instead of going to directors. Uh, because then it makes Mr. Lujan be out of the loop and it's very detrimental to the overall operation of the city when we have counselors. Reaching out to directors and we need to move forward from that. And um. I just wanted to remind everybody uh and. Deputy Chief Wickersham Johnny, Chief Johnny, um, November ninth is we're planning for the, for the ribbon cutting. For the La Jolla Wise Fire Station. I'd like you all to put on your calendars and please be in attendance. Uh. Uh, we don't have that set. As soon as this, this young woman starts, we'll. Get her on that, planning that. We plan to invite the neighborhood. Uh, we plan to invite the governor. Uh, there's multiple state officials who gave money to this project, so we'll be inviting them as well. And we'll be identifying situation of, of everything what we're going to do and coordinate and it'll be a big. Fabulous celebration. This is the first time in, I think, eighteen years that the city of Espino's constructed a facility, so we're excited about that. Any other questions for the manager? And being none. Going to move on. Items proposed for council consideration, discussion items, action items. Action item A is the appointment of the Finance and Public Works Committees. I'm proposing a reorganization of the two committees. Uh, Counselor Dennis Tim Salazar will chair the Finance Committee and Counselor Aaron Salazar will chair the Public Works Committee. And uh. Counselor Nanette Rodriguez will chair. Well, will serve on Finance Committee is what continue. Counselor Manny Martinez will serve on Finance Committee. Counselor Justice Salazar Torres will continue on Finance Committee. Uh, on Public Works. Mayor Pro Ten Peggy Sue Martinez will continue on Public Works. Counselor Denise Benevides joins Public Works and Counselor Justin Salazar Torres continues on Public Works. Respectfully submitting those for appointment this evening.
Discussion.
Motion to approve.
To approve.
Motion to approve appointment of Finance and Public Works Committees?
So if, if.
Second, Counselor Nanette Rodriguez.
So if uh Counselor Justin is on Finance and Public Works. Was he on Finance before?
Yes.
And he was, and he was.
Yes, everyone is on two committees.
Okay, that's.
Yeah. By ordinance, everyone is on two committees.
Okay. So the switch off is Dennis and.
The chairs have changed.
Okay, and.
And one member.
Moves to.
Yes.
Committee.
Mm-hmm. There's a motion in a second. Need discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Pro Ten Peggy Sue Martinez.
In favor.
Erin J. Salazar.
In favor.
Denise D. Benevides.
In favor.
Justin Salazar Torres.
In favor and also just want to say Counselor Salazar, if there's anything you may need, I'm at your disposal, senor. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Dennis Tim Salazar.
For the motion.
Manuel J. Martinez.
Uh, for the motion, but I just need a clarification. I wasn't sure if I heard correctly. I'm being moved from Public Works to Finance. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Dorothy D. Valdez.
For the motion.
And Nanette D. Rodriguez.
For the motion.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Appointment of Planning and Land Use Code Revision Committee. I'm proposing the appointment of all the Planning Commission members and. Two members from the governing body, that is to be Counselor Erin J. Salazar and Counselor Denise Benevides. Motion. Second. For Tim Peggy Sue Martinez, second, I think that was Counselor Dennis Tim.
Yes, sir.
Second, my Counselor Dennis Tim Salazar. There's no discussion. This committee will obviously, as Mr. Luhon. At his urging, they'll be working on revising the much needed updates to the code. Uh, we have a lot of work to be done with the code. The code was first adopted back in nineteen seventy six under Mayor Santiago Martinez and. One of the biggest things is we have evolved the town and how we've developed, but we. The commercial corridors are a mess because you still have a lot of residential homes on the corridor and I'm hoping that that can be. Accomplished very soon. Mayor Pro Ten Peggy Sue Martinez.
I, I think this is an opportunity, like you said, Mayor, where, where things were zoned in nineteen fifty six. As a commercial that landed up never getting developed into commercial. It was a vision that that governing body at that time obviously had. Uh, stick homes have been built on those properties. Uh, as you move forward and there's no possibility of it ever going back into commercial. So I think those situations. Need to be looked at street by street by street, especially the ones that are mainly residential and are zoned commercial or. Or otherwise, just utilizing the property as the community can best be served.
Yeah, and one of the big primary areas is San Pedro Ranchitos and here on the west side here in La Loma, you have.
The areas that you're talking about are Mill, San Pedro, Ranchitos, behind uh.
Well, from the Valencia's north.
All the way up, right?
And then kisses and all that.
Exactly.
All right. No further discussion. Ms. Garcia, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Pro Ten Peggy Sue Martinez.
In favor.
Counselors Manuel J. Martinez.
In favor.
Dorothy D. Valdez.
For the motion.
Erin J. Salazar.
In favor.
Justin Salazar Torres.
In favor.
Dennis Tim Salazar.
For the motion.
Nanette D. Rodriguez.
The motion.
Denise D. Benevides.
In favor.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Um. We're not doing C. We're not doing D. E. Approval disapproval of mini packer truck in the amount of one hundred and fifty six thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars and eighty eight cents. Mr. John Francisco, sanitation director.
Mayor Pro Ten and members of the. The council. So I have, uh, you have before you a coach. From MCT, I believe it is, yes, from MCT. It is a firm that also builds uh these, these trucks, large and small. So the first quote that I had was actually. At a hundred and forty three thousand dollars. And so that truck was actually sold. There was a truck that was on the ground at the moment. It was sold. This one's on the ground and uh, uh, I think it's in Iowa right now. So uh, for it to be, it'll be mated with another truck. So this quote came in at a hundred and fifty six thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars and eighty eight cents. I'm very hopeful that it'll still be available. So what I'm wanting to do is. Uh. Make this not to exceed a certain amount. I'd like it to be at that, at that price, but if something does happen because of the strike. I'm not sure. I mean, while the quote that I have is good for thirty days, so it should be good.
Motion to approve as an emergency purchase.
Second. By Mayor Porter Peggy Sue Martinez, clarifying the motion that it's an emergency purpose in the language and let's make that very clear, Ms. Martin. Second by Counselor Aaron Salazar. Before we go into this, um, I want to commend Mayor Pro Ten Peggy Sue Martinez. She was browsing on Craigslist actually last week and she found another. Piece of equipment that I understand John went to go look at and we'll probably putting that. If you talk with Eric and you think that you feel that should come before us, we should probably put on next week's agenda as well. We'll very well talk about it. Okay, any further discussion? Them being none. Ms. Garcia, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Pro Ten Peggy Sue Martinez.
In favor.
Counselors Nanette D. Rodriguez.
For the motion.
Erin J. Salazar.
In favor.
Denise D. Benevides.
In favor.
Dorothy D. Valdez.
For the motion.
Justin Salazar Torres.
In favor.
Manuel J. Martinez.
In favor.
Dennis Tim Salazar.
For the motion.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Going on, Resolution twenty twenty three dash twenty four, participation in local government road fund program, pro, run, road fund program. Administered by the New Mexico Department of Transportation Municipal Arturo Program. EKA MAP, Mr. Eric Lujan, and I think he's getting assistance from Sally because Sally had. Worked on these before her. Transition.
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Ten, city counselors. These items came before you in August to extend the, the funding through. Uh, the end of the fiscal year, June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Approximately a month later, I was contacted by DOT. They offered us the option to extend these same resolutions. Through December thirty first, twenty twenty four. Nothing else has changed. It's a request just to. Extend the deadline to give us more time to work on these projects. The resolution before you twenty twenty three, twenty four. Is the uh DOT funding for Fairview Lake. And I'm happy to stand for questions.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Mayor Pro Ten Peggy Sue Martinez, second by Counselor Nanette Rodriguez. Any discussion?
Then be. Discussion there, just thanking them for realizing that we've been in transition and understanding that we may need. Little bit of time. This is another one of the projects, Mr. Lohan, that. Uh, we need your attention on. Considering that we need extension and everything that we have. But there's numerous things in the office that require. A lot of attention, that's believing.
Well, I, I, I want to commend actually Sally. Sally's the one who identified we were, these, this fund was about to expire on June thirty, twenty twenty three. And Sally worked diligently with our former city comp firm as well, Lupe Macier, to, to maintain. I'm sure we didn't lose this money with DFA and. Uh, Mr. Lujan's contacts at DFA have also allowed us to. Continue us not to revert this money. So, you know, I, we, we have to really thank, thank our administrative staff that worked really hard to ensure that the city doesn't lose this. It's. So important that the city of Espanola doesn't lose any money that's on the table.
Mayor Pro Ten Peggy Sue Martinez.
In favor.
Counselors Manuel J. Martinez.
In favor.
Justin Salazar Torres.
In favor.
Denise D. Benevides.
In favor.
Dorothy D. Valdez.
For the motion.
Dennis Tim Salazar.
For the motion.
Nanette D. Rodriguez.
For the motion.
Erin J. Salazar.
In favor.
Motion carries.
Right. Moving on, participation, Resolution twenty twenty three dash twenty five. Participation in local government road fund program administered by the New Mexico Department of Transportation, Mr. Eric Lujan, Ms. Sally Baxter.
Mayor, this is, goes to what the, the uh.
Hold down.
Mayor Pro Ten. Uh. Was alluding to earlier in the discussion in my report. Uh, basically, this is going to cover us until. Well, I can't see the date.
This is for Camino Milamontes.
Yes, Mayor, this is for Milamontes. So this expires at the end of the year.
Of twenty twenty four.
So expand this and moving forward to get this project completed off the ground and. Fully function before that deadline and we, we will. Not have to go back for another resolution if this project gets kicked off the ground.
Motion to adopt this in the, in the hopes, uh, we're not. In the hopes that we're not going to be near that. Twenty twenty four date at all that we're going to complete it before then, okay?
Yes, ma'am. Motion made by Mayor Pro Ten Peggy Sue Martinez. Second by Counselor Nanette Rodriguez. Any further discussion? And being none.
Mayor Pro Ten Peggy Sue Martinez.
In favor.
Counselors Dorothy D Valdez.
For the motion.
Erin J Salazar.
In favor.
Justin Salazar Torres.
In favor.
Dennis Tim Salazar.
For the motion.
Denise D Benavides.
In favor.
Nanette D Rodriguez. Manuel J Martinez.
In favor.
Motion carries.
Moving on, resolution twenty twenty three dash twenty six. Participation in Mexico Department of Transportation Municipal Arturo Program for Street Rehabilitation Fundee. Mister Eric Lohan, Miss Sally Baxter.
Mayor Counselors, this resolution. Is participated in Mexico Department of Transportation in this chill program for street blessing. For rehabilitation funding. And basically what this does, man, to summon it quickly is is allows us to. Utilize the general general use of for the for the road projects that we have currently in the hopper.
Motion to approve, sir.
Motion to approve Mayor Pro Ten Peggy Sue Martinez. Second by Counselor Aaron Salazar.
Mayor Pro Ten Peggy Sue Martinez.
In favor.
Counselors Dorothy D Valdez.
For the motion.
Manuel J Martinez.
In favor.
Dennis Tim Salazar.
For the motion.
Nanette D Rodriguez.
For the motion.
Denise D Benavides.
In favor.
Erin J Salazar.
In favor.
Justin Salazar Torres.
In favor.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Action item I, resolution twenty twenty three dash twenty seven, authorizing signatory authority for century bank accounts. Mister Eric Lohan, Miss Sally Baxter.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Ten, City Councilors, at the request of council, we have brought before you a resolution. To designate officials. As signatory authorities. Currently, it is the persons with signatory authority include. Mayor V Hill, city manager Eric Lohan and myself. The proposal before you would assign the mayor, the city manager. And finance director as the official signatory authorities for all banking business and transactions. It would temporarily assign myself. Only in the absence of the finance director upon the hire of the finance director, which is expected to be. October the sixteenth. The finance director would become the signatory authority and I would be removed. This is for the purpose of. Transferring funds. Between city accounts. An example of that is. Our payroll specialist will prepare the direct deposit. And send a written request to transfer money from the operating account. To the payroll account and it's to make that transfer. And it's kind of a plug and play setup. The online banking. Gives a list of what city accounts there are to transfer from and what to transfer to. So it's temporarily for that. There are, it includes in the resolute the resolution. The ability of the signatories to directly supervise staff who may have limited view access. And this is to facilitate. Activities such as bank reconciliations. The city of Espanola receives certain funds, including gross receipts taxes as HCH transfers in. Staff sees those. It's generally the financial analyst position. Which is currently vacant, but then staff enters. That information into our Casell system, so. That is the resolution before you and we're happy to stand for questions.
For purposes of discussion, motion to approve.
Motion to approve for purposes of discussion, Mayor Pro Ten Peggy Sue Martinez. Second by Counselor Nanette Rodriguez. Counselor Denise Benavides, actually, we needed the motion. She had her board on.
You you want me to yell to the council?
Oh, that's right. Give me. Yeah, you did the most motion. So you open discussion. Yes. So Mayor Pro Ten, you'll go first.
You know. I have concerns all the time with signatory authority. I I want everybody to understand that. I really believe that we need. Dual signatures whenever money is transferred. I really feel like it's a safety thing that should probably be added to this. It's not on there as far as I could tell. It's like one person can transfer money at any time, correct?
Mayor, Member Ten, City Councilors. Yes, yes. But we do have a procedure. I'll give you an example. In order to transfer money for the payroll. Our payroll specialist initiates the request. So she actually has initiator. Approval. She'll. Upload the report for the direct deposit payments for payroll. She sends me an email specifying the accounts, the amounts. Then I go in and I approve her upload and make the transfer and I print out the document. Showing the transfers been made. I go to her and we both sign off with our actual signatures. Then I scan the report. And then give her the original and the original report goes with her payroll files. So it's. Our internal process and it's something we've been working on. Over the last few months, making sure we have those dual signatures. Once we have the finance director on board. I imagine she'll review and be able to improve even further on this. On our processes.
So. In one of the meetings, there there was a concern that. Mayor John Ramon had transferred money from one account to another account via telephone call. And I'm not going to lie. It shook me. I was saying, what? I didn't understand it at the moment. And I didn't sleep very much that night. I just couldn't understand what that was about. So I came to your office the next morning and I talked to you. I talked to the comptroller and I come to find out that it's something that we do monthly. I didn't know that. That we move money from one account. To cover. Payroll twice. And we also cover accounts payable with that same move. So. I asked, why did the mayor transfer the money? And the explanation was pretty easy. Jordan, who had signature authority, was unpaid administratively. Rob that had signature authority was unpaid administratively. You did not have signature authority because you had not been ratified by the council as the interim as of yet. And we didn't have the comptroller in place at the time. So John Ramon, Mayor John Ramon was the only person available. To be able to initiate that transfer. I didn't understand that when it was said in the way that it was said. And it made me breathe easier, but I do believe that having the dual signatures of yourself and the payroll administrator. That's one level of protection for the city. But I also do think that as as a as a finance board. Having fiduciary responsibility for this community. That we should definitely consider. Dual signatures for any type of transfer that happens over a certain amount, just to protect the city.
So I I want to go a little bit further on that. I've already talked with Mister Lohan. Quite frankly, the city of Espeño has way too many accounts. We that in a normal entity, you don't have to do what we're doing transfers back and forth. You know, if there was an accounts receivable account, that's where payroll should be coming out of directly and then you just general ledger it. Or you do an accounts payable or whatever. You know, you have way too many accounts at the city and and Mrs. McCure. Indicated that early on, she said, you know, the county only has about six or seven. We have we have over twenty. And it's very hard and auditors have brought it up. It's it 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 just comes back from years and years ago. We have these multiple accounts and most of them even hardly have anything in them. They have most of them have less than twenty thousand dollars in them and we just use them as a pass through. It makes it very hard for a bookkeeping standpoint to do that. And so I've told Mister Lohan to. Work with the finance director so that we don't have these transfer situations. And 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 then at the end of the day, you just have a general ledger. Accountant or the financial analyst position, whatever that term that person is, their bookkeeping, the journal entry where the transfer was. But it's coming out of just one primary account or, for instance, we just we have too many accounts.
Just at a normal day, Mayor, you would not be involved in the finance. You would not be. Utilizing your authority to transfer money. The reason that you did it that day was because there was nobody here to do it.
And it, yes, and it's been going on for years. The finance director and the manager, they've been doing it for a long time. And that's why we need to put a stop to it. We don't need to be having transfers if we just have one singular account where money is coming out of and then we will need a transfer at that point. Counselor Benavides.
Thank you, Mayor. Quick question. I just wanted to know if the same individuals that have signature. Authority also have the authority to sign checks because it that's a separate process. And like Mayor Pro Temp said, as far as assigning of checks, will those be dual signatures?
The whole history of the city, the mayor's always been the signature authority on the checks. It's always been printed with my signature, the mayor's signature. Going back years and years. But to take out and make make withdrawals, it's always needed the two signatories. But there's every check, it has that automated signature. Every payroll check always just has had the mayor's signature.
When when we pay out. Accounts payable like vendors and and such.
Yeah, those need the two signatures from the voucher.
Yeah, and I think that that's what I was concerned about, Mayor.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Anyone else have any? Okey dokey. Ms. Garcia, would you please?
Mayor Pro Ten Peggy Sue Martinez.
Favor.
Counselors Dorothy D Valdez.
For the motion.
Denise D Benavides.
In favor.
Erin J Salazar.
In favor.
Manuel J Martinez.
In favor, but I I do just have this the concern of of one of us as an elected official having signature authority on that, but. I in favor.
What what what, counselor? So you you've never rose this in the last two mayoral administrations you've served under?
Yes, sir, and I still had the concern then. I just feel that this is administration and not I don't feel it's for. For. To be more clear with the with the with the money and and as far as I'm trying to sorry, I'm trying to think of the word I'm trying to say. Yeah, yeah.
Nanette D Rodriguez. Justin Salazar Torres.
In favor.
Dennis Tim Salazar.
For the motion.
Motion carries.
The time is eight ten. This means now turn. Thank you.